Perfect. All right. So it looks like we've got. I think I saw the Collinses here, the Smiths. It's good to see you guys. Actually, both sets of Smiths. Just John, not sure who just John is, but just John, the Howards, Kevin Parker, Turners. Beck and Stephen Hennings, good to see you guys, Robinsons. It's great to have you guys all, Blackburns. Mark Anderson, the Russies. Hunters, and we have a lot of people named Matt. Chocks and anyway, it's great to see you guys. I'm going to go ahead and jump on in so we can have the maximum amount of time with, with Nick. Before I bring him on, I wanted to, I wanted to just greet you and tell you how great it is to always get to be with y'all. I wanted to run through a couple of quick things before I bring Nick on, in particular, wanted to make sure I give you guys an update on just kind of where do we stand financially? What is the thing? What do things look like as we're in the midst of this transition? Also, in the midst of a kind of post COVID season. So let me, let me just walk you through a brief picture of the financials. Make a couple of comments about that and then they will have an opportunity to talk to Nick. So I'm going to go ahead and share the screen with you. Give you some slides that we can kind of take a look at and, and go from there. So. Let's do this. Here we go. All right. Okay. Well, here's, here's kind of the picture up to date. As you guys know, our monthly budget is about $64,000 a month. And this is where we sit between this particular, since the beginning of this budget year. We, if you remember, our budget year begins September 1 and runs through, through August 31st. And as we sit right now, the giving has been about $458,000. And up against our budget, we're running in just about a $60,000 roughly deficit so far this year. So, you know, obviously there's been, we talked about this in the past, you know, there's been a lot of, a lot of changes. There's been a lot of things going on post COVID in the midst of COVID. I'm going to show you a couple more things to kind of give you a full picture of that. This is kind of what it's looking like roughly somewhere around. You know, out of the, the eight months or so, we're looking at about a $7,000 a month, if you will, short, shortfall at this juncture. And this is what it's looked like if you compare it to the, oh, actually, before I get to that, our current reserves, the good news is we've, we've, you know, over the years, we've built up a pretty healthy reserve. At about 381, almost $382,000. So, so we're running well when it comes to reserves. Running a little bit on the deficit on the operational side, but here's what it looks like from a, from a giving threshold or standpoint or perspective as we look since the beginning of, of 2021, this is kind of a full picture. You can see this white line right here. You can see my cursor is, is September, which is the beginning of our new budget year, but it went up briefly here. So the orange line here and here is the, is the budget on a monthly basis. And you can see we kind of go up and down, but we kind of been bouncing around underneath the budget, the budget forecast that we're looking at in order to, to kind of run the operation at Roswell Community Church. So. We had a couple of higher months in particular here. As you can see, obviously December is obviously a higher giving month. These numbers here reflect, reflect the number of giving units or giving families at Roswell. And so you can see that we've, we've had, that's probably you can see the most significant decline. It doesn't show because we don't have a separate graph for that. But you can see that, you know, back in 2021, we were hitting more into the kind of low 90s, mid 80s on giving families. And we've had, you know, the decrease in that as we look in the last little bit here. I think there's obviously been some folks that have been trying to determine what the post COVID church reality looks like for them. We've had some of y'all join us for the first time at, at RCC and begin giving, which has been amazing. But this is kind of the picture where we're at. So from a, from a giving standpoint, we're relatively flat, as you can see, and not a ton of change. We have a little bit of a dip here, but otherwise relatively flat. But, but at the same time, we're, we're just, we're kind of remarkably right now, or at least particularly under, under budget. So, oh, jumped too far ahead. So. What does this mean? Let me go ahead and just stop this with, you know, what does this mean? It'll look like, this means that, you know, we're, we're being particularly cautious and wise about, about the spending, right? Trying to keep expenses to it to a minimum so that we're able to, to be as effective long-term with how we, how we, how we steward Roswell Community Church's resources. So we've been able to stay under the, the budget from an expense standpoint, and we hope to be able to continue to do that as much as possible as we have an opportunity to kind of rebuild some of the, some of the giving that has, you know, shifted in the midst of the past couple of years. So attendance has been kind of steadily growing. We actually, you know, and after sermon talking through some of those rhythms of coming and being at church, several of, of you kind of re-entered the, the regular gathering at, at RCC. That's been really, really great. So we've seen a bump in attendance on Sunday mornings and anticipate more of that as kind of there's some re-normalizing and kind of re-entering into the, the faith community as well as new families being able to join RCC. And I see some of you have joined us even on this call. So that's pretty exciting. So. So that's kind of the picture, the financial picture. As you know, we always want to make sure that we're, hey, we're just talking about church money and the way it is. What it does, does tell us though, is that there's a, there's an opportunity for us to continue to be able to be generous. And I was thinking about this. I looked back on the 12 years, my 12 years at RCC. Like, one of the things that's been consistently true throughout, throughout the years is that, that God has been able to meet all the needs that we've had through your generosity, through the ways in which you've responded to God's invitation to be generous, to be faithful, and it's been amazing. And so this time is no different than that. Now, we, we have an opportunity for us to continue to be generous, to give of ourselves and, and financial generosity is some of what is the response to the gospel that we get to be a part of. So we invite you to do that. If you're giving, we're so grateful. If you aren't giving, we'd love to be you to be a part of the mission of Roswell in this particular way to, to offer your gifts to God in this particular context. So if you have questions about any of these financial pieces, you can reach out to info@roswellchurch.org for any of those questions. So that's the financial update. I want to go ahead and jump in though, get an opportunity for us to spend some time with Nick. So I'm going to bring Nick over to be one of, bring a, be a panelist. I believe this should have worked. We tested earlier. Nick, are you with me? All right. Looks like this is gonna work. All right, Nick, can you see me? I can see you. That's good. Yeah. Right. Sweet. Okay. Fantastic. Um. All right. Well, everyone, this is Nick. Nick, this is everyone. Also just me, but you know, everyone's behind the scenes on this and I can't tell you how excited we are that you and Kaylee and your boys are going to be coming down to Atlanta and be leading Roswell Community Church. We've had obviously an opportunity to, you know, folks have had an opportunity to, to listen to one of your sermons. We posted that on, on the meet our new pastor page and as well as to kind of read some of your bio and those elements. So, you know, you get a sense of what someone's like from the stage, right? From as a pastor, that's a real thing. But it's different when you get to kind of sit in the living room, which we're getting to do with you right now. So I thought we'd, I'd kind of jump in and I prepped some questions to be able to just ask you. So in a way, I'm imagining this is like you and I are sitting in the living room, but really you're sitting in the living room with everybody. And we'll have an opportunity to kind of chat, which will be fantastic. So all your basic bio, kind of, you know, where you went to seminary, all that stuff, that's all on your bio on the websites. We're not going to go into that minutia. Let's go into some interesting things. So let me jump right in. Tell me, um, tell me like, if you, tell me about it, like if a movie character or a TV character that you most identify with, tell us a little bit about that. Who do you, who do you identify with? And yeah.
Yeah, that's a hard question. Um, so I think my favorite television shows, I might have a couple that I'm like, man, I really like this character. I love Jeff Daniels in The Newsroom. I just really liked it. He's kind of like this, this guy really trying hard to do something that he really cares about, but not everybody else does. And he's trying real hard to do it the right way. He's kind of got some childhood baggage and, um, and so I just, I really enjoy the flawed nature of him trying to work out what he feels like he's supposed to do that.
Interesting. You identify with that, with the working out flawed nature?
Yeah, exactly. Yeah. Yes. I love it. Um, and so I'm always, I've always liked, pretty much anybody that Aaron Sorkin's written, you know? I kind of like Josh Lyman's, like in West Wing, kind of his borderline frenetic energy. I also just enjoy it. I appreciate that. So those two are great. You know, there's probably a little bit of Hawkeye and MASH in me occasionally.
Okay. Old school. That's like legit.
Yeah, throwing it back a little bit for sure. Yeah.
Yeah, it's probably the, Kaylee say, who does she think you're, you're like, or she's.
Unlike, I don't know which one she would say. I think she's definitely seen some of the, uh, the Jeff Daniels before. He and I both have a strong dislike for reality television is, and so, you know, probably there's some, there's some connection there. I don't know. She probably said that one. I think is we were talking about, she thought it was for her and like who she identified with. Yeah. So she said Monica from Friends and I would say, yeah, definitely. I would co-sign that. Yeah.
Why though? What, what particular aspects?
So she's oldest child, um, type A personality, Enneagram one, like everything needs to be perfect by the book. Like all of that, like definitely strong will. And so I think I can see it. I mean, she's right. Yeah, that's, that's a good call.
That's awesome. That's awesome. You know, I think if I'm not mistaken, Newsroom, I think is one of Steve Heimer's favorite shows. He actually is the one who turned me on. So yeah.
Yes.
Like, yes, I actually never heard of it before. So, all right. So give us the, give us just a basic rundown for all the guys in the room. Give us the basic rundown of all your, all the sports teams, whether, you know, like even if it's marginally following, give us like NFL, Major League Baseball, NBA, NHL, college, whatever, soccer, whatever, you know? So the run through, who, who do we know that we should be rooting against you for, you know?
So the main team that I've always been about, and we had season tickets to them growing up was the Dallas Stars. And so I grew up playing hockey, loved hockey. And that was the team we went to see. And that was right when they were winning Stanley Cups and the finals and have these really good teams. And so that's always been my team. It's been a rough stretch a little bit recently, but I think we're headed a good direction. I did, I grew up in Austin and so the University of Texas in Austin, I'm a big Longhorns fan. You know, I am unfortunately today an Arsenal guy. It was a rough one today, but I do like them with soccer. With NFL and NBA, I kind of like a lot of different teams. It's just fun to watch. I don't know that I'm like a diehard there. But I definitely enjoy watching them. I'm a recent Formula One convert. And I find it really hard not to root for Daniel Ricciardo because he's just the most likable human being in the world. And so that's probably like a big overview sketch for me.
Okay, okay. That's, that's helpful. You know, just, yeah. That's surprising how many people have gotten into Formula One recently. That's actually, yeah. Uh, and it's like a COVID, COVID explosion, you know?
It did. Yep.
All right. So let me, like, one of the things that's true about Roswell, right, is that, you know, we, as a community have loved. We've, we've, we've loved being a community. We're vulnerability and just being who you really are. No, no one's, no one's perfect. We all know that. So, so if you have, you have a like, give us like an embarrassing moment. Like here's Ben, it doesn't matter when in your life, but what's, what's been an embarrassing moment that can, that can humanize you to, to all of us in a, in a particularly.
So I remember when I was doing student ministry in Kansas and it was, I was the youngest guy there by, by significant margin. I would say, they would say not significant. I would say significant margin. And I was really wanting to impress like the, everybody at the annual elders meeting. And so I put together this report and I kind of have a little bit of background in graphic design. And so I spent a ton of time working on some of these, this overview graphically of where we'd been as a student ministry. Unfortunately, I'm also not a details person. That's just not what I'm good at. I try really hard. It just sometimes they don't click with me the way that I wish they did, especially when details and numbers kind of come together. And so I put this report together and passed it out to everybody and I'm going through and they had a breakdown of total Wednesday night attendance. And then the Wednesday night attendance by grades. And if, if you added those numbers, the number I came up with didn't work. So basically I spent a good three weeks on something that was factually inaccurate because I can't add it. And everyone noticed in the room as I was giving, hey, these numbers don't add up. And so that was not great. That was not a good moment for me, wanting to come in and impress people. And being exposed a little bit is not always being a detail friendly individual.
Yeah, but it was, but it looked great because it was graphically.
It did. It did look good. Yeah. Yes.
Yes. I think because, you know, most people know Becky does graphic design and too. So she's, she's also into the like, it looks great, whether it's accurate or not. That's very.
Yeah, that was questionable. That was a little bit questionable, which really helped my credibility.
That's awesome. All right. So one of the things I prepared for you is, um, what I call a little lightning round, kind of a little spontaneous.
Yeah.
This is gonna, this is the, this is some of that polarized, some of it's polarizing, some of it's not, but some, some of that polarizing stuff. So let's go with the easy one up front. Dogs or cats?
Both.
Come on now, but if you.
We're just huge animal people. Um, what kind of dog?
Okay, that's what it is. Okay. Cause did you guys have animals?
We have two cats. Yeah. So I got Kaylee, when we were dating, it was going to be early romance. She loves cats. Like she is a cat. She would say cats. She is a cat. Proudly a cat person. So we were dating and she was like, oh, I think it's gonna be fun to have a cat. So it's like, oh, let's go to the pound. And that was gonna be this romantic thing. And, and so that turned into two. And then 15 years later, then we still have them. They're still with us. Yeah.
Fantastic. Okay. So, so dogs next is what I'm hearing you say. Is that what you're saying? It's dog.
Yeah. So yes, Sawyer is already, our youngest has already told us we're getting a dog. And so that is on the way.
All right. All right. So another, another kind of softball one, mountains or beach?
Yeah.
Which, which.
Mountains.
Mountains? Like 10 times out of 10? Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Um, getting a little bit more personal here. LeBron James or Michael Jordan?
Michael Jordan. That's not even a question.
Great. Good. See, you know, you're passing this in flying colors. There is, there are right answers here, you know, I didn't tell them.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. Yes.
All right. This is, this is a, this might, okay, the present or the future?
The future.
The future? Okay. All right. Um.
Yeah.
Singing, singing or dancing?
Oh man, I'm really bad at both of them, but it would be better for everyone if I danced.
It would be better. Okay. Have you, have you?
Yeah.
So do you, is this one of the things like at weddings or, or do you just pretty much try to avoid the opportunity altogether?
It's not great. So I grew up Southern Baptist and so, um, I didn't get a lot of practice when I was younger, you know what I mean? And so it was kind of this, this just place that you weren't supposed to go. And so if I had to, I would. But especially if you gave me the choice, dancing or singing, as bad of a dancer as I am, it's still better than my singing voice.
Okay, that's fantastic. Um, yeah, that's one of those things with the, the sound guys that you always have to be careful of, you know, because, you know, you have your mic on. They accidentally turn you on and everyone gets to experience that. That's happened to me before. So anyway, just one of those things to watch out for. All right. Sweet or savory? Sweet or savory?
Savory.
Okay. Um, chess or cards? Oh, do you free, I think. Do you get me there? All right, there you go.
Cards, for sure. Cards. Definitely cards.
All right. Any particular, do you grow up playing cards? Like any family games or?
So I was thinking like blackjack, poker, uh, like those kind of card games. But I don't really, I don't, yeah, we do, you know, I'm trying to think what we do with our boys. We like board games with our boys. I did teach them to play blackjack under the guise of helping their math. And so we have that, full disclosure. Um, so yeah, I just don't fully. I kind of get chatted, but I'm not good enough at it to have fun. You know what I mean?
Yeah. No, I hear you. Yep. Very much so. Not, not a good chess player personally. So, all right. This may be one of the more important ones. Tim Keller or Matt Chandler?
Matt Chandler.
Matt Chandler. All right. All right.
Yeah. Yeah. We went, so the first year that he started the village is when I was in college in Dallas. And so we would go, you know, up there. And so I definitely have some strong times there.
Affinity to Matt. Yeah. He's a good dude. Um, all right. R and B or country?
R and B.
Okay. Okay. Well, even with the Texas roots, not, not the country guy.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, it was Dallas. So I mean, it's not like, you know what I mean? It's.
Yeah. Um, all right. Another important question, solid colors or plaid?
Solid colors, definitely.
Colors. Okay. It is a regime change. This is a real thing here. Um, okay. That was, that was your lightning round. So let's jump into a little bit more of a, sorry, on the chat, I'm seeing on the chat, I think it was Matthew Hunter just, just said no to the, to the plaid. Um, so all right. Let's jump into the family questions. Let's get a little, yes, about your family. Um, what, give us maybe like three things that you would want us to know about Kaylee. Uh, what's, do you, you'd want us to know about her?
So she is sort of an undercover extrovert. Like she's definitely an introvert, but the, like, the Kaylee that you meet the first time and the Kaylee that you meet after you've logged maybe five or six hours are two very different people. And so she's actually very outgoing and very funny and very energetic. It just like, it takes a little bit, you know, she's kind of quiet at first. So this is number one. I think number two is she is actually, she would say she's not, but I, I, I would tell you she is very, very talented and creative. So her undergrad is in architecture. And so she's actually really good and just has an eye for that stuff. Um, and so she's just super talented. And so it's really fun to kind of get to see her do that stuff when I'm not the one paying for it. Um, and so that is just a really cool gift that she has. And three is she's just really good at, um, at running our house. Like she's very talented. She's very gifted like leader of, at home. Like she does, again, details, administration, the cooking, the making things run. Like she absolutely is crazy talented at just making things happen. And so I really appreciate that about her.
So quite the balance, it sounds like. I mean, you said, you talk about, you know, the details are not your most given thing in the world. And she's actually, you know, the, the Monica reference kind of things. That's, that's a pretty cool balance, the two of you guys.
We definitely, we like to say like, we balance each other's crazy out. And so we both have the places where we get stressed out and crazy, but they're different. And so we're, we're, one of us is always in a sane, stable place. And so, yeah, we definitely are a really good balance to each other.
Cool. Well, talk to, so tell me about your boys. Um, tell me something specific that you love or just delight in, in each one of your boys.
Yeah, it's really cool because they really are both so different. So Ethan is our oldest. Uh, he is 12. And he is like your typical oldest child. Um, we like to say he's been 45 years old his entire life. He's just kind of like this old soul adult in a very small body. And so, um, you know, he's really, he's really funny because he's incredibly gifted with people. Like he just knows everybody and is very good at engaging people. Like adults, we were in a coffee shop when he was five and some guy walked, I was like, hey Ethan, he was like, oh, hey Jim. Who is that? How do you know him? He's like, oh, that's Timmy's dad. You know, I know him at carpool. And I'm like, oh, okay. And so he's just, you know, we call him kind of the hype boy because he's the life of the party, super engaging with people. Loves to achieve, like he's just very much an achiever, not an accomplisher. And so, um, it's really cool.
Yeah. When we had breakfast, when you guys were in town at breakfast, like I just, I mean, he and I had the best conversation there. I was like, I feel like I'm talking to a 25 year old. I mean, it was crazy.
Yeah, he is just, it's been, he's just always kind of had that. So it's really cool to watch him do that. He's just, um, he's a funny guy. And then Sawyer is our, our youngest. And so he actually came six weeks early. Um, and we kind of say like, he's, he came into this world doing what he wanted, when he wanted it. And that's just been true his whole life. And so he's this really cool combination of like, um, he's really multi-layered because on the one hand, he's super high energy. Very, very much just like a Visigoth. He never wants to wear pants. Um, and has all this energy. But then at the same time, like he's super sensitive and creative. So he loves art. He loves to cook. Like he's actually, he's really good. He bakes and cooks. But he also loves mountain biking and rock climbing. And so it's just, he's kind of just like I said, this super cool, multi-layered, um, creative kid. And so it's funny because he just like, he'll be in soccer and sometimes he cares about the game and other times he's just kind of hanging out, you know, and it's all good. And so he's been really fun to watch kind of grow into himself because he's really, really deep, but he's also like, he's not the most talkative. He'll just kind of sit back and when he does talk though, it's usually pretty good.
Yeah. Well, again, I think at breakfast he was, like he drew some, um, like unbelievable drawings on some, I was like, wait, I'm sorry. What? Like he's legit talented.
Yeah. So there's a, that's a double edged sword because he's also a little bit of a perfectionist. So he watches the YouTube videos and draws. And when it doesn't work, it's very Van Gogh cutting off the ear. Like we get in these creative fugues and it's not always pretty when it's not clicking like he wants it to. But yeah, he's, yeah.
Wow. Wow. That's cool. That's cool. So tell, tell me what, um, what is, what is a restful day look like for you and your family? Like if you, if you guys are like, okay, this is the day where like, we just kind of get to be us. What does rest look like in particular for y'all?
Yeah, it's probably a little bit different for everybody. Um, for the boys and I, that's going to be high outdoor activity. And so like Ethan and I golf together. Um, that's kind of one of the things we do. He loves basketball right now. Sawyer, again, the rock climbing, the mountain biking, like that's super, or honestly, and cooking with Kaylee for him. But kind of as a family, honestly, we really like to spend time together. We do like to go out to eat. We don't do that a ton, but like that is something we enjoy doing. You know, we like spending time together. We do movie nights every Friday. And so that's usually pretty restful, make some frozen pizza and watch movies. Uh, we'll do some game nights. And so for Kaylee and I, it's probably a little bit more low key, honestly, just where we can, I would say, well, we've always been and continue to be really best friends, which is really cool. So we just kind of like to hang out and talk, you know, where we get space to just kind of hang out and talk and be together without the swirl of kids and, and work and, well, right now moving, um, you know, just everything like that where we can just kind of sit and be, that's really, really fun. Um, we really enjoy that.
That's awesome. Yeah. By the way, good job hiding all the boxes from the shot, you know?
That's because we haven't started packing yet. Don't like, it's, it's, yeah.
That makes sense. That makes sense. That's cool. Um, well, um, where did you want to be when you grew up? Like when you were a kid, what was, what was some of the vision you had of yourself, whether it's, you know, serious or, or black hearted or?
Yeah. So super young, Top Gun was my favorite movie. So I wanted to be a fighter pilot. Um, but I have terrible eyesight. I'm bad at math and I really don't like heights. And so that just wasn't, uh, wasn't going to work. Um, as I got a little bit older, I really thought I was going to be an attorney. Like I wanted to be a lawyer. Um, kind of my joke with that is it was just like all the worst, underdeemed parts of my personality would make me money. And so, um, it felt like a really good career path. And so I really did think that, I thought that's what I was going to do up until kind of my last year of high school. I mean, I was all ready to do that.
Wow. So what, uh, what, what brought the shift about when you had?
So, yeah, we moved to Dallas after my mom got remarried. Um, and we had been there, I don't know, at that point, probably four years. And the church we were at, I was really active and I loved our student ministry. And at the time, I just really liked to help, you know, it's fun. And we had a camp, a preaching camp at Mount Lebanon Baptist and campus. And they needed counselors. And so I was an older high school student and they're like, do you want to be a counselor? I was like, yeah, that'd be awesome. Let's go have fun. I just, you know, that's kind of what it was for me. I didn't know they were going to ask me to like teach a Bible lesson or like preach a sermon. I didn't, I thought I was just like playing tag and, you know, having a good time, whatever. And so I did that and I still, I can't tell you, I don't remember what I preached on. It might have been Noah. I don't remember it, but, but I, but what I do remember really clearly is as I was doing it, I could almost just feel God saying, no, this is what you're supposed to be. I had always loved people. I always loved the church. Like those were always just big parts of my life. But that, that first time I taught the Bible, it was just like this, almost, it wasn't audible, but it was tangible of like, no, this is what you're supposed to be. And so, um, you know, at that point, that kind of changed everything for me. Um, I went to, it was either going to be going to Dallas Baptist for my undergrad in biblical studies or Baylor. And Waco was not cool yet. It was still more David Koresh and Chip and Joanna at the time. And so, um, I was like, there's no chance I'm living in Waco. Yeah. And so I, I went to Dallas Baptist, um, and did an undergrad in biblical studies. And that, it just kind of is where that, that shift happened for me. And that's pretty much what I've been doing ever since.
Wow. Don't you just, don't you wish you could go back and like watch you preach that sermon? Like, you know, just be like, okay, I have some pointers.
Yeah, I'm probably, it's probably good that I don't. Yeah. And you know, it's probably better this way. I just couldn't remember that, you know, I felt really good about it at the time.
Yeah. I think I preached my first sermon on, I think I did it on heaven, which I don't even remember why that was the case, but, and I think I actually still have the notes. But I have never gone back and looked at it because I'm like, I, I don't think I want to know how bad that must have been. Like anyway, it was, um, I think if I'm not, student ministries, right? I think I showed a clip of, what was that? Uh, yeah, Mike, Nicholas Cage and, um, what's her name? Meg Ryan movie where he's an angel or something, City of Angels, something like that. Anyway.
Yes.
Not super discerning. I don't think that that was the wisest thing for high schoolers. Anyway, but I showed a clip from that. I remember that distinctly going like this, this is good. This will grab the students, you know? So. Anyway, all I had to say is first sermons. Wow. So that's really, that's really cool. I don't think we, I hadn't heard that. Like to have that palpable of a sense of like, all right, I think this is the trajectory. So that's awesome. That's really cool. Well, tell us a little bit about, tell us maybe about, um, an, an early, like just formative moment or, or that kind of really shaped who you are today or that, that kind of launched you in a different kind of trajectory, just something that's kind of pretty formative for you.
Yeah, I honestly think for me, it was probably like a lot of people, um, out there. My parents divorced was definitely pretty drastically formative in a, in a few different ways, you know? So it breaks a little bit differently in every relationship. But in our case, my, my dad had an affair with a lady at work and that was kind of where he went when my, that was why they got a divorce is, hey, I'm going to go be with this lady now. And so on top of the divorce, she had had a kid from a previous relationship of some kind. And it was kind of, hey, this is your new family now. And so for me, beyond just the divorce, it was kind of also this feeling of, of just an overall almost rejection. And so I'm an only child, um, actually an only grandchild on my mom's side. And so it was literally just me and my mom. And she was a teacher. Um, and so we moved back to Austin to live with my grandparents. I think the downside for me, formative wise, is it really did put me in a sense, growing up of really having to work through a lot of baggage around rejection and shame for a really long time, honestly. Trying to hide or build a wall around it so people couldn't see it. Um, but that just made it worse, right? So I'd even say in through being a young adult was me kind of unpacking, the harder I tried to not let people see brokenness, the worse it was versus just being vulnerable and allowing that connection. And so that was a tension that I had, um, for years, um, that was difficult in a formative sense. I think some of the positive in that though, was when I look back and see when we moved to Austin, the church that I was involved in, and there's great churches everywhere, but that church I was involved in at the time was Grace Covenant Church in Austin. Just an incredible Bible teaching student. Uh, just an incredible, um, Bible teaching student ministry there. And that was, that was really, and we wouldn't have, we wouldn't have been there if they hadn't gotten a divorce. Uh, my grandparents basically raised me. I was their only grandchild. And, and we got to live down the street from them, um, from, let's see, gosh, it would have been third grade through seventh grade. Um.
If you don't want to, those are, those are some, those are those pivotal years there.
Yeah, yeah. And so I had a granddad that really was there. And so that was amazing, you know, that was really, really cool. And that's a lot of my sense of family with instability was around my grandparents. Um, you know, and also my stepdad, you know, he's great. My mom married him. Uh, when I was in seventh grade, we moved to Dallas where he was. Um, and he's a great guy, you know, and so now I have this other guy and these voices in my life, um, that were really positive and maybe even protected me from voices that weren't as positive. And so, uh, but honestly, I think a lot of it through there was just learning and getting to a point where it was really difficult to not want to hide and paper over places where I felt shame and really trusting God enough to be vulnerable and allowing connection in those places of shame and brokenness. You know, it took me and Sal was probably in my mid twenties, um, to get to that point. And so there's been a lot of pain in there, but there's also a lot of healing and restoration that have happened in the aftermath of that.
Yeah, Becky has a friend who, um, who said, one time she said, she said, um, I'm, I'm pretty convinced that, you know, redemption is better than perfection, you know, if, if the biblical narrative, since the biblical narrative is true, redemption must be better than perfection, you know? And we obviously always want perfection, right? But it's like, even to hear you describe that, it's like, yeah, this is like a redemptive, no, redemptive narrative, even in the midst of pain, as you said, pain. It's like, like this isn't the way you'd write it, but the way it was, the way God wrote it in, it's actually pretty beautiful. So wow, that's, that's just cool. That's really awesome. Thanks. Thanks for sharing that. That's actually really, really, really cool. Um, well, I'll tell us a little bit about, you know, the, for you, the, um, if you will, like take, take us behind the scenes, um, of you and Kaylee kind of processing through experiencing the, the, the search process and then particularly, you know, coming to a place where you're choosing Roswell and kind of like, kind of like, kind of, why, why, why RCC? You know, there, there are other options for y'all and, um, so like, take us, you know, take us in that conversation you were having at the car or whatever, you know?
Yeah.
Whatever that kind of, and, and what was it about RCC that both made you say, I think this is where God's going to has us and that makes you excited about it? And uh, yeah, so where does that look like?
So going into the search, I think, because we knew, we've been, I think in some ways, very fortunate to have a church instead, hey, we really think you're called to be a senior pastor. We want to help launch that out. And so we had kind of almost a full year of getting to go do a search process and really seek where God was calling us. Um, and again, there were stressful things about that, you know, waiting, but then there were also really good things in that. And so it really gave us time to be intentional to think about what we valued and were looking for. And so going in, we knew there were a couple of kind of non-negotiables that were really important to us. And one of them was community. I mean, just the church is a place where relationships are deeply valued. Um, and fought for and people matter. Um, and the church really is a place where the goodness of God is reflected through the love of people as they serve one another. That was just a huge priority for us, you know? There have been places where we've experienced that, um, very vibrantly. And that always has really stuck out to us. And we kind of knew going in kind of who we are, um, and what we were looking for was going to revolve around a church that really loved people, um, because it's really who we want to be. And so that was huge, you know, we knew that elder life was very, very important. Um, and so there were kind of some hallmarks that we knew. And I, I don't mean this in any disrespect to a different philosophy, but we were not really looking for the seeker sensitive model of, of let's kind of do the spiritual Reaganomics, like the trickle down, if we can get you in the, you know, and so that just wasn't necessarily the model that we were looking for. And that's not to, you know, kick that much, it wasn't, we kind of knew that wasn't us. And so, um, as we started to apply, you know, we did look at geography. Um, we wanted a place that was familiar. And so we lived in Greenville, South Carolina for the first two years of our marriage. Um, and, and loved the South, like we'd always even talked about retiring there one day. And so we, so there are just kind of some basic parameters like that. So the first time that I saw the RCC listing on Slingshot, um, I said, okay. This, on the surface, check some really important boxes. I think, you know, I think we should apply here, you know, they clearly theologically and philosophically aligned kind of with what we feel. Um, it's in, it's in an area of the country that we are at least basically familiar with and feel good about. Uh, and so it was, they're, it kind of checked some of those initial boxes. I think where it became like different for us was honestly, the first time that I, that I Skyped and Kaylee was, I mean, she probably is now too, but there's a, I'm in my office, the living room's next door, um, Skyped with the search team. Um, and it was the people. I mean, it was just like, there is a sense of just kind of this connection with the people. It's like, man, these are just people that we want to hang out with, you know, um, these are people that we want to do life with. There is just something about the people that I've said before, really did reflect kind of the goodness of who God is in a way that was really attractive. And so we didn't get that sense with other churches we were interviewing. And they weren't bad. They were really wonderful churches, really wonderful people. Um, but there was just something about the people that felt like home, you know, um, there is a vulnerability, I think there, there is an authenticity. And I think it kind of gave me space to be authentic. Um, you know, there was a church that we were interviewing with in the, in, in the end of, um, it was the beginning of January, maybe, um, it didn't go very far. In the first interview, they asked for my story and I told them and had mentioned some biblical counseling and they said, hey, have you ever actually trusted Jesus instead of a counselor? And immediately I was like, oh, I don't really feel like I can be super authentic and vulnerable with these people now, you know? And it was the opposite feeling as I talked with, with the people there at Roswell is, you know, this is a safe place to be vulnerable in who I am. And in the job, which was stressful, by the way, not knowing, you know, where we were going to have a job, that almost became secondary. Um, it's like, man, God's doing something in the connection with the people and whatever he does, this is just a really good place to feel and move. Whether at the time, we really wanted the job, but whether that happened or not, you know, we didn't really know how things were going to shake out. It's like, man, there's something about the people. We just kept saying, we just want to talk to them. Uh, we just wanted to talk to them again. So then we Skyped again and we're like, no, we and Kaylee got to join. Like, no, we really just, like, we just want to keep talking to these people. Um, and then you and I had a chance to chat as we were kind of in final stages with some other places. We were really stressed out because we really felt the most strongly about Roswell in terms of connection. But we didn't know, you know, maybe they're interviewing other people. Are they going to like us? Can we need a job? We can't sell these other churches? No, right now, because we do like, what, God, what are you doing? Um, and so I think.
So certainty was, was right there, right?
Yeah, we felt really like, man, there's something here that's really special. And, and so, you know, like I told the T, the guys, I was like, if that was the first church we talked to, they were, then we wouldn't have needed to talk to anybody else. Um, and so there's, it was the people. And so, you know, as we talked and I got to hear a little bit more of just that perspective of what has mattered, um, to the congregation and how people really do value, what does it look like for us to truly follow Jesus together? Um, in a way that is really authentic, in a way that's not, you know, church isn't a show. It's not, it's not a, you know, a business. It just, it really is a community of people wanting to do our best to know Jesus and grow together. Um, man, it was just everything that we had prayed for when we had thought about what kind of a church we'd want to be a part of.
That's awesome. That's awesome. We were super, I mean, obviously we were stoked when, um, when you, when you guys responded affirmatively. And, um, I think you said that Kaylee was pretty excited when you called her and.
Yeah, he was. Yeah, she actually cried like in a good way. Uh, and so that was neat. That was really cool.
That's awesome. That's awesome. Well, um, can you tell, tell us a little about just kind of like where you guys are stage wise, you know, what timing, where you guys are looking at as far as timeline to come head on down? And what was that looking like right now?
Yeah, so we're pretty fortunate again, work wise, I'm pretty much, um, I am on stock through Jill, June 11. But I, they were kind of like, look, man, you've got stuff to do, like come, come in when you want to, um, don't come in when you don't want to, which is great. And so it gives me the freedom to still go to, you know, it's kind of some of the, the more relational, devotional times with the team and you know, wrap up some of those really important relationships, at least as a coworker, um, which is really cool. And then where we're at with the house right now, honestly, is kind of the last stages of just getting some things ready to put it on the market here, hopefully in about a week. Um, there's just some minor, some people, there's some things that I shouldn't do around the house. Single mom Dallas, like you don't want me doing a lot of things with my hands. It's not, uh, I tried to replace the sink faucet in the kitchen in Kansas and, and I think it, it almost cost us our marriage. Um, so I'm just not, it's not what I do.
In general, I'm thinking plumbing and electric are just one of those things like, I'm not sure. It's, it's not a, it's not something to play around with.
Yeah, I got, well, so I did one effectively this week and it was the highlight of my week is I actually changed one of the no problems this time. So it's already smoother. Yes. Um, it, that's been really, really good. And so we're just kind of finishing those things up. Hopefully after the 17th, um, we will be able to get on the market. Our realtor is pretty sure it won't last more than a couple of days, which is really nice. And so we would like to move ideally, you know, mid-June, mid to late June. My first day at RCC is July 1st. And so that mid to late June is sort of what we're hoping for. Um, the boys finished school the last week of May. And it would be weird for them to go to a new school for a week. And so we're going to let them wrap up here. Uh, and that kind of gives us a chance. We will be down, um, the last weekend in May, um, we'll actually fly down the day after they're done with school. And so we'll be there doing some stuff with church and we'll also be there kind of looking, do we think maybe rent, but maybe buy, we, we're still kind of zeroing in what suburb, which is new, because in Terre Haute, you just, you live in Terre Haute. And so, um, you know, what suburb do we want to be in, what area? And so I think getting to be there physically will really help with some of that. So we're really just praying and discerning some of that stuff right now.
Yeah, and y'all have some friends, right? Actually, I got to meet them, Greg and mom.
Yes.
From a while ago, yeah.
Yeah, I guess they've still been going. It looks like they're on Mother's Day. Um,
They were, yeah.
Greg is, um, he was one of my first friends at Dallas Seminary. Um, we knew each other before we knew our wives. And so, uh, we were really good buddies for a long time. I had texted them before we came down for the interview and he was like, oh, man, we just moved to East Cobb. He was like, we're actually looking for a church. It's like, can we just come with you? Like, we can do an interview. I was like, yeah, sure. And so, um, they really loved it. I guess they know some people too, just kind of from different places. Um, and so that's been a really cool kind of unexpected blessing to get to, um, get to do that. And the fact that he knew me when I was 21 and still wants to go to a church where I'm a pastor is, is just a testament to God's grace. And so that's just, that's been really cool. Um, and so we've been chatting with him a little bit. Um, and so, yeah, it's, it's been neat. That's been a cool reconnection.
And I mean, that obviously is one of those, that's one of those, uh, just special little side things. Cause it, I mean, moving to a new, to a new place regardless, and even, even, I mean, the, the church community is obviously a beautiful thing. Like I don't, and even, I understand how people move to new areas and actually end up finding a sense of deep connection, like I just, without church. But anyway, um, but so, so, I mean, that, that'll be an immediate reality of you being connected into a church community, but, but it's hard. I mean, like going to a new place and y'all have now moved a couple of times. So you know that it's true.
Yes, yeah.
With you, for your boys and stuff like that. So I just want you to know, like, I put as an elder board, um, as well as, um, uh, you know, search team, we've just been praying for you guys as, as both, as God prepares y'all's hearts to be able to kind of begin to set those roots, you know, like that kind of, I think about that root ball that gets dropped into the ground and over time, you know, starts putting those roots out. So praying that that's, that's smooth and, and real in it. And generally, we're just really excited about being able to, to be a community that's both led by you as well as, um, that's also able to, to care and love on y'all, you know, to be a both and. So, uh, so anyway, it's just really, really, so.
No, we appreciate that. It's been awesome. We can't, I mean, it's, I mean, we are not just the weekend that we were down there, it already felt like home. And so we're really looking forward to, um, to just getting to be a part of what God's doing there.
That's awesome. That's awesome. Well, um, yes, I think, let me see, yes, uh, Greg was at Georgia with Joe Blackburn. That's right.
Yeah, yes, yeah.
He also knew David Willhite, if I'm not mistaken. I think that was another.
Somehow, in a very tertiary way, I think.
Yeah, but it counts, it counts, say listen, you know, it's Georgia. If you know anybody for that, for 30,000 people, it should be something. Um, well, Nick, thank you for the time.
Yeah.
I know, you know, uh, one of the things, um, for those, you know, for the, um, we're going to be doing, um, a, uh, kind of a community night. I actually have a slide and I'm not going to put it up. It feels weird to put a slide up for them. And we're on a new community night on May 29th, that evening. Um, and that's the same weekend that Nikki, Kaylee and their kids will be in town. So, uh, have an opportunity for everyone to have an opportunity to be able to, um, to be able to face to face, be able to say hello and kind of get to chat. And it'll be a little bit more of a relaxed context around that, which will be fantastic. So if y'all don't have it on your calendars, uh, May 29th, I believe, 5:30, it's on the slide. It'll be announced. It'll be fine. So, but, um, anyways, but Nick, thank you. Thank you for coming and being with us. And I'm super excited about being able to have you guys here, like finally here and, uh, getting to, um, to experience God's goodness through you to us.
Um, yeah, we're excited. Yeah, thank you. Right. So we just really appreciate everything that everybody's already done to go out of their way to make us feel welcome. So it's, it's definitely an exciting season.
We're stoked about it. So we'll know that we're going to keep praying for you guys until you actually have boots on the ground here. And, uh, till then, uh, we look forward to seeing you guys at the end of. And, um, and, uh, again, May 29th, so for all those of you who, um, need calendars, that's the night to be able to be, get to meet Nick and spend some time together as a community. So thanks for y'all for joining us. Next again, thanks so much. Uh, y'all have a good evening, Thursday evening, and, uh, we'll see you guys on Sunday. Thanks.